Thank you, that was really loud, I'm sorry. We are gonna actually begin tonight by welcoming Ms. Asia Jester as the newest Board Member of the School of Trustees from District 7. The Board of School Trustees approved Ms. Jester to fill the opening, and we are honored to have you here with us. So, tonight, you'll take your oath of office, and then we'll pause just for a moment so we can get a picture with the guests who might have come to see you tonight, and then we'll move on. Mr. Bunker.
Asia, if you would please stand. Raise your right hand, and before that, please say aye.
Aye.
You may.
Asia Jester.
So, I only swear.
So, I only swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the State of Indiana.
And the State of Indiana.
I will faithfully execute.
I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of this governing body.
As a member of this governing body.
So, help me guide.
So, help me guide.
Please.
We'll let her take just a moment to sign that, make it official. Alright, and then, yes, picture? We'll go ahead and just do it? And if you have guests here with you, they're welcome to come up. I see like a whole row of folks I don't normally see. So, please, come up, take the picture.
And there's flowers, so you have to.
Look, it just shows how much you're loved and supported. We're gonna go, are we going in front?
Yes.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. You don't wanna be in the picture.
I don't, I don't mean like.
That's right. Okay. I will now open the preliminary determination hearing on the proposed project on the agenda. If you are interested in speaking at this hearing, please make sure you have a completed comment card and give it to Mrs. Butcher. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comment about this project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. At this time, I will ask that MCCSC Council Mr. Tom Bunker explain the purpose of this hearing.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, members of the Board, and members of the public. Pursued to Indiana Code 6, love these numbers, 1.1, 20-3.5, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminarily determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost in excess of certain thresholds. These public hearings and the future considerations of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. We note that no board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comment regarding this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunker. We will now hear from Dr. Marquet Winston about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community and the need for the project. Dr. Winston will also discuss how this project meets the needs as described.
Thank you, President Hennessy. The educational need for the project, as we all know, strong schools contribute to the strength and economic vitality of every community. Approximately eight years ago, in 2017, the MCCSC Board and Administration hired CSL architects to conduct a facility review in order to gather up-to-date information to understand corporation-wide facilities' needs. During the ensuing years, we have continued to work closely with CSL architects to update that facility study so that we can continue to plan in order to design, build, and sustain excellence, with respect to having state-of-the-art facilities throughout our community. Since 2017, our operations fund, previously referred to as the Capital Projects Fund, has continued to be pressured due to a number of funding restraints, legislation, circuit-breaker, and additional pressures on the education fund. As a result, it is imperative that we look out over the next 10 years to proactively determine the amount of money that we will need to sustain and maintain our buildings in alignment to our academic needs. Tonight, we will be asking for an approval of a project that would allow us the flexibility to renovate and improve facilities throughout the school corporation, including upgrades to safety and security systems, classrooms, for example, pathways, STEM, performing arts, and others, site and athletic improvements, facility upgrades, and the purchases of equipment and technology enhancements. The renovations and improvements that we seek would be done without an increase to the historical debt service rate, the historical debt service tax rate. Overview of the project to meet the education needs, cost, and timing. As you will hear from our municipal advisors, Baker Tilly, we have a plan to maintain and sustain our buildings for a maximum borrowing amount of $221,620,000 without an increase to the historical debt service tax rate. This maximum borrowing amount will be issued over the next 10 years as needs arise. We realize that better facilities provide better environments for student learning. As such, we will hold strategic facilities meetings with our patrons, our parents, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, to better listen with the goal of better understanding the wants and needs of our community while always recognizing the need to conserve tax dollars as being paramount. Today's goal is the same as it was in 2017, when this Board approved a $120 million project to address the needs identified in the original facility study. Following our facility studies and being strategic regarding our funding has allowed MCCSC to consistently maintain one of the lowest tax rates in our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. We will now hear from Mr. Brock Boucher of Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor, about how the proposed project will be financed, as well as information about the effect on the typical property taxpayer. Mr. Boucher.
Thank you, President Hennessy, members of the Board, Dr. Winston. Pleasure to be back here this evening. As mentioned, my name's Brock Boucher with the firm Baker Tilly. As also stated, we serve as municipal advisor to Monroe County Community School Corporation, so I have three main goals for this evening to talk with you all about. First one is to review existing debt as it stands today for Monroe County schools. Then we'll get into the max financial parameters related to the proposed projects. Then we'll ultimately show how this project could fit within the existing debt to mitigate any impact to taxpayers. So, before I jump into some of the details, I do want to state that according to state statute, we do have supplemental financial information available to anyone who may request that information. So, to get started, as I mentioned, we are going to review existing debt for Monroe County schools as it exists today. There are eight securities outstanding, and when we refer to debt, we're talking about any debt issuance that has more than a one-year repayment. So, eight securities outstanding as of today, and this Board has been very pragmatic with managing its debt. As you can see, this visual chart shows debt matures by 2039 for Monroe County schools, but we have a nice opportunity to consider debt as early as 2025, because we have two bonds maturing this year, and additional bonds maturing in 2028, then more that mature in 2033. So, a nice, what we call a waterfall effect, to contemplate projects as soon as this calendar year for Monroe County Community School Corporation. For those who prefer numbers opposed to a visual representation, the same information is on this chart, and it tells the exact same story. We have a couple of bonds maturing in 2025, additional bonds maturing in 2028, so that's why we can contemplate projects as early as this year because of how this Board has managed outstanding debt to afford this opportunity this evening. Now, looking at the max proposed parameters related to this project, as Dr. Winston outlined, we would establish a maximum borrowing amount of $221,620,000 for each bond, and we would split this up into multiple issuances that you heard Dr. Winston mention. Each bond would be in line with state statute that requires a no more than 20-year repayment with multiple, multiple years planned for issuance. Due to the fact that we'd be issuing bonds over multiple years, multiple issuances, and being very conservative on some of the assumptions on the cost of issuance, so bankers' fees, municipal advisor fee, local council fees, bond council fees, rating fees, builder's risk fees, title insurance fees, appraisal fees, a long list of cost of issuance, we would establish a parameter of, assuming we have $213,820,000 available for construction projects. Again, that's not certainty, that's just a max minimum threshold for what we assume for project, projects proceeds. Being also conservative on the interest rate of 5.5%, we've seen some volatility in the bond market here in the past couple of weeks, and even saw some more today. Looking at these max parameters, we're assuming a 5.5% interest rate, which is conservative based upon what we see in the market, even as of today, due to that volatility. We'd be establishing a maximum annual payment related to these projects of $25 million. That's not to state what we think the annual payments are going and increasing to, but rather, as you saw the debt maturing, how we can structure this payment after those bonds mature to mitigate that impact to taxpayers. I think for your main takeaways, you heard Dr. Winston mention that in an effort to mitigate that impact to taxpayers and continue to manage the tax rate, we would be targeting a 21.5 cent debt service tax rate, which has been a target decided upon by this, by this Board. So, with this structuring and with this existing debt, we can structure in a way to target that 21.5 cent debt service tax rate. That we'll look at in a little more detail on the next slide. The last two rows refer to ratios that we require statutorily to provide. So, if we look at the max annual payment for current and proposed debt, the max annual payment divided by your net assessed value, that is a ratio of 0.24%, which is low compared to what we see throughout the state of Indiana. Then lastly, looking at total existing debt for Monroe County schools and add your overlapping units, like cities, towns, counties, and any property tax-backed debt, a ratio of 5.24%. Again, that's a low ratio compared to what we see throughout the state of Indiana. Those are the max parameters, but leading to my third point of how we can structure these in a way to target that 21.5 cent tax rate. The gray bars on this slide is the same information you saw on the prior slide three with the existing debt, with debt maturing by 2039, and to contemplate projects, issuances as early as 2025 to begin our repayment in 2026. The blue bars represents how we could structure the projects in a way to target that 21.5 cent. This is not exactly how it would look like based upon max parameters, but an illustration of how we could structure it to target that 21.5 cent debt service tax rate. A lot of opportunities because of that waterfall effect we talked about on slide three. With that, welcome any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Any comments or questions? We will now open the public hearing to public comment. Do we have any public comments on this issue or topic? Okay. Seeing none, we will officially close this hearing. I just want to thank you to all those who provided information for us tonight, and I do want the community to know that this is just the first step in the legal process. No board action is legally required at this hearing. It's solely to hear public comment. It will continue, the Board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. And we will hold a second public hearing here in this boardroom on April 29, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I officially call this preliminary, preliminary determination hearing closed, and we will move to the regular April meeting of the Board of School Trustees, which I now call to order. Before moving on to any of our agenda items, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would put this at 6.04 at new business, and it would be called teacher petition discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, we will move to a vote to amend the agenda to add this to our agenda for discussion tonight. All those in favor of amending the agenda to add 6.04 new business item, teacher petition discussion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any abstained? I don't remember the word for a minute. Alright, we'll call it passed, and so we'll add that to the agenda for later. Moving on, excellent spotlight. Tonight, we will honor the excellence of MCCSC's dedicated employees, students, and volunteers who make a difference in our school community as we do every month. Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, the Board of Trustees, and community members. It's my pleasure to share this month's excellent spotlight. The excellent spotlight will be a new feature of every regular Board of School Trustees meeting designed to align with the superintendent's 2025 status schools, which recognize student excellence in each of our 23 school buildings. The excellent spotlight will serve as a dedicated time to honor the excellence occurring every day through the dedication of MCCSC employees, students, and volunteers who make a difference in our school community and foster environments that reflect the MCCSC mission, vision, and core values. The April excellent spotlight goes to Mrs. Lisa Voss from Grandview Elementary for her incredible work in making music education accessible for all students. Her passion and dedication to creating inclusive music learning environments have led her to share her expertise at a professional event on adapted music for students with special needs. Mrs. Voss is making a lasting impact on students and educators alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. And congratulations for those who were recognized tonight. We will now proceed to public comment. I think that we only have one public comment tonight, so I will just call Jenny Noble Cuchara to the podium.
Good evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, MCCSC School Board of Trustees, and Monroe County community members. My name is Jenny Noble Cuchara, and I am the president of the Monroe County Education Association, and as such, the exclusive representative speaking on behalf of our teachers' union tonight. As you are aware, the Indiana General Assembly has passed legislation that takes critical funding away from Indiana's public schools. This, combined with decreased student enrollment, leaves us all in a terrible position. As our employers, you may need to lose employees through more than natural retirements and resignations. Currently, the Monroe County Community School Corporation does not have a reduction in-force policy. Let me be clear that when it comes to issues of transferring, looking at criteria, our discussion between MCEA and MCCSC is effective. It's productive, it is working, and we expect real success to this end. The ask tonight is that we have almost 500 signatures, these are the originals, and we are calling on MCCSC's school board to honor using our discussion policy to then develop and adopt a policy that will look at potential reductions in force, unfortunately, as we may need them to occur in the months or years to come. Such a policy will, of course, meet the needs of our students and schools, and honor our teachers' expertise and work experience, and be enshrined in MCCSC board policy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, we will now move to the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the board meeting held on March 25, 2025, memorandum from the work session, executive session, and minutes from the special meeting held on April 10, 2025, grants, fund, and bank reconciling, the financial report for March 2025, appropriation balance report for March, register of claims April 22, payroll register and payroll claims March, request to declare a surplus and authorized disposal of out-of-date items. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Tiana that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, for our consideration are the donations. We have received donations of over $4,000. Of course, as always, we are grateful to our donors. Your generosity is greatly appreciated, especially at this particular moment. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Ashley that we accept the donations as presented. All those in favor of the motion to approve the donations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next, for our consideration is the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as it's presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It is, it has been moved by Ross and seconded by Tiana that we approve the personnel report as presented. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the Board of School Trustees. This evening, I would like to call to your attention the following resignations and retirements. We have an administrator resignation this evening from Dr. Christopher Finley. Dr. Finley has been with MCCSC for the last 26 years, serving in a variety of capacities from teacher, assistant principal, coach, principal, and most recently as the executive director of coordinated school services and strategic partnerships. If you add his year prior of student teaching, you could count 27 years for Dr. Finley's service to our school corporation. Dr. Finley is leaving MCCSC to accept an assistant superintendent's position with the Avon Community School Corporation. Retirements this evening include an administrative retirement, Mr. John Kenny, our chief financial officer. Mr. Kenny has been with MCCSC for the last eight and a quarter years, serving as our chief financial officer. And finally, our certified staff retirements this evening, Shermeen Farid Driscoll. Mrs. Driscoll has been with MCCSC for the last 17 years, most recently serving as a Spanish teacher at Jackson Creek Middle School. Diana Johnson. Mrs. Johnson has been with MCCSC for the last 25 and a half years, most recently serving as a Title I teacher at Templeton Elementary School. And finally, Shannon Roberts. Mr. Roberts has been with MCCSC for the last 31 years, most recently serving as a mathematics teacher at Bloomington High School South. Altogether, the resignation and retirees presented this evening represent a combined total of 107 and 3/4 years of service to our school community. On behalf of MCCSC, I'd like to extend a special thank you to all these individuals for their many years of dedicated service, and certainly wish them well in their next adventures. At this time, I request that you please approve the recommendations as presented in the board packet for the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Dr. Winston.
Yes, I just want to take a quick moment as well and say thank you so much to Dr. Finley for his tireless years of service and collaboration and leadership throughout the organization in so many ways. I've had the blessing and the opportunity to know Dr. Finley for the last eight years, and he has certainly been a stellar part of this community for so very long, and Avon is very fortunate to receive someone of your caliber. So, I wish you well, and congratulations on this next move in your career. I'd also like to take this moment to thank Mr. Kenny. Mr. Kenny has served as the CFO of our organization for the last eight years, and he has done that with the highest degree of integrity and commitment and effort. And I owe you, Mr. Kenny, a debt of gratitude for all that you've done for me in these first nine months in this role in highlighting the realities, the challenges, and yes, the opportunities that exist within our current and our future budgeting. And so, I just wish you well in your retirement, and yes, I'm a little bit jealous, but congratulations.
Wait a minute. Did you know in Japan, they have these firms that will call your job for you and make your resignation for you, because sometimes when you try to resign, you'll just be told no, and they'll expect you to come back? So, I don't know. I mean, I might be contemplating that tonight. No, we really do wish you all the very best, either on retirement or as you move on to new adventures. So, we just thank you so much for your time and service with us. Any other comments from the Board?
I just want to second that. I think this Board has asked this administrative team to go above and beyond so many times, and both Dr. Finley and Mr. Kenny rose to that request every time, and I'm so grateful for that. It's been a pleasure getting to know both of you the past few years, and I wish you the best. Avon is lucky to have you, Dr. Finley. Congratulations.
Ditto.
Sweet, sweet, short and sweet. Alright, well then, I guess we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Alright. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, we will move on to contracts. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts and award one bid as presented?
So moved.
and yes, the opportunities that exist within our current and our future budgeting. And so I just wish you well in your retirement. And yes, I'm a little bit jealous, but congratulations.
Wait a minute. Did you know in Japan, they have these firms that will call your job for you and make your resignation for you? Because sometimes, when you try to resign, you'll just be told no, and they'll expect you to come back. So I don't know. I mean, I might be contemplating that tonight. No, we really do wish you all the very best, either on retirement or as you move on to new adventures. So we just thank you so much for your time and service with us. Any other comments from the board?
I just want to second that. I think this board has asked this administrative team to go above and beyond so many times, and both Dr. Finley and Mr. Kenny rose to that request every time, and I'm so grateful for that. It's been a pleasure getting to know both of you the past few years, and I wish you the best. Avon is lucky to have you, Dr. Finley. Congratulations.
Ditto.
Sweet, sweet, short and sweet. All right, well, then I guess we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, we will move on to contracts. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts and award one bid as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Ross that we approve the contracts and award one bid as presented. Mr. Kenny?
Good evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, members of the board. There are several contracts and a bid to be awarded before you tonight. I recommend approval of the contracts and bid award as presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the board? All those in favor of the motion to approve the contracts and award one bid, please do signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, for our consideration is Resolution 2025-06, Tax Anticipation Warrant. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-06 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Tiana that we adopt the Resolution 2025-06 Tax Anticipation Warrant as presented. Mr. Kenny?
Thank you. Resolution number 2025-06 Tax Anticipation Warrant allows MCCSC to make temporary loans to meet current expenses for the operations fund in anticipation of and not in excess of the 2025 Operations Fund tax levy that was approved by the Department of Local Government Finance in January of 2025. It is our intent to work with the Indiana Bond Bank to obtain a tax anticipation warrant in the amount of $12 million that will be received in late May and will be payable in late December after receipt of our summary of our semi-annual property tax distribution in mid-December of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Do I have any comments from the board? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the Resolution 2025-06 Tax Anticipation Warrant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? That motion carries. Okay. Dr. Winston, will you introduce tonight's presentation on professional learning?
You added 6.04.
Oh, yes, I did. And I even looked, and I was like, where is my addition? Wow, okay. Thanks, I have people who are keeping me on track. So next up on our agenda is 6.04, Discussion of Teacher Petition. And I will just start by saying that I did receive, as I think all board members were also copied on the email that came from Jenny, just giving us an advance notice of the petition, and the signature's in typed. So we've all seen that, I think. Maybe some people haven't seen it yet, but if you do, it's in your inbox. And so I just wanted to open this up. This is not a voting matter at this moment. We are only having a discussion, one for you all to receive information from Dr. Winston, from Tom Bunger, and from the board officers who might have some additional information to supply. And so that's the reason for adding this to the agenda tonight.
Was there a paper copy of the petition available? Or can you pull out my laptop?
There is not a paper copy, I'm sorry. But yes, it's in your inbox if you'd like to look at it. I do think that it was somewhat clarified for me, too, when Ms. Noble Cuchara said it is essentially an ask that the process of discussion is used to create a policy around the factors by which a teacher would be, according to what she said at the podium, reduced, if there were reductions in force.
Or transferred.
Well, yes, I'm just saying what she said. She said that the process as it exists already is working for transfers and things of that nature. So I think specifically, she called out reductions in force. However, yes. And so I think that that is the ask. But I think it's time for us to just have a discussion, because many of you might not even know. And we have two very new board members here, so I just wanted to give you all time to ask any questions you might have and receive any more information that you might need. No question?
Yes, I do. Sorry, I do have a question. Oh, well, you said that Dr. Winston and Mr. Bunger might have some more information. That was my main question, is that because the policy specifically, or the, sorry, the petition specifically references the policy. I believe this is a reference to the policy we passed last year. It says to honor our board adopted discussion policy and collaborate with MCEA. And so I wondered if Mr. Bunger could address the relationship between a new policy that would relate specifically to staff transfers and reduction in force and the previously adopted policy regarding discussion?
I would think that it follows that policy. I don't think this is trying to implement what I believe is the policy that the board adopted last year, which is to say you would hold discussion. This is an item they put before you to discuss. So I would think it would come under that. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a new request, a new policy. I think it's saying, will you consider this based upon the policy that we adopted last year? I think President Hennessy identified it right. We've got that policy in place.
And so, so absent an additional policy specifically addressing transfers and reduction in force, what would be the requirements of the board or the administration to discuss prior to making?
First of all, there's a statutory authority for reduction in force that establishes certain parameters and how that works. What I believe this petition is, is to, within the framework of the policy where you're saying you're going to have discussion, is to have discussion concerning this. And out of that discussion may come a procedure, a process, for dealing with the rifts, if rifts become necessary in the future, to have a policy to deal with it. Is how I would interpret it.
Thank you. Okay. So for clarification's sake, am I allowed to ask Ms. Cuchara a question based on this to clarify or not? Because I think I'm confused now. So is the request simply that, and this may be something that has to come back to us later, but here's my question so that you know. The question is, are we simply being asked to uphold our original policy to discuss this? Or are we being asked to form a policy independent of our discussion policy?
That's how I understood it.
You understand it to be a discussion, a policy independent of our discussion policy?
Yes. That specifically addresses potential reductions or layoffs. That's how I understood it. Well, I read it.
Okay, so the things that I do know, and this is, sometimes I'll say things for the benefit of the community or the public or for new board members. So what I do understand are a couple of things. One, there are certain statutes that must be followed or upheld by law when it comes to reduction in force by the state of India. So those things exist, and we can figure out what they are. I think one of them is that the defining characteristic cannot be tenure or something like that. Is this correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Two, for our two new board members and for the public, we do have a policy on the books currently that allows for discussion between both ASME and the MCEA. So things like the factors for reduction in force, for instance, or for transfers or for whatever it might be, those things have already been in discussion.
That is correct. We've had a discussion two weeks ago with MCEA on the factors that would be considered in the event that we need to move forward in this direction. And last week, we had a discussion with ASME about the same content.
Okay.
And there have been independent conversations with members of my executive team.
Okay. Independent conversations?
With MCEA.
With MCEA, okay. So I guess, I don't know how to get clarification on this, but I do think that I'm confused.
I understand that. And I also recognize that this item was added to the agenda this evening. And I think what that means is that is, this would be the start of the discussion?
Yes.
And that we wouldn't go back and forth in the meeting?
Yes.
But Dr. Winston, team, board would proceed in trying to understand what we're looking for, what we're talking about.
Yes.
I mean, it's a new item. You need to look at this, understand. We've got new board members. I think the board needs to understand what the statute is with drifting, what your options are, what your requirements are. Some of you may not have looked at what the current policy is, but to educate yourself, bring yourself up to speed so you even know the right questions.
Right, that's right. I think, but I think the important thing for us was to start this conversation so, because I know that the end of the school year is coming up. So I wanted to make sure that at least it was something that we begin the conversation for, so that we can say, okay, here are some of the curiosities that we have or questions that we have or things we might need to know in order to make a decision on something like this. And because as I understand it, it's in discussion right now. The factors that have been identified as the factors that would be used if there were any kinds of shifts in employment are being discussed. And so I think from my perspective, I would need clarification. If it's already in discussion, we have a solid discussion policy, what is the additional ask of the district or of the board that can't be handled in discussion? I would like to know that.
I understand your question. I think Dr. Winston is taking note of what it is, and we'll get back.
And anyone else? Any questions or concerns or considerations or things you would like to know?
I think, I think that, for me, that is the question. I could state some of the things that I'm assuming this means, but I think you've done a good job of summarizing the points that need clarified.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. That's what I need to know.
Okay. Anybody else, Ross?
I'm kind of on the same page, just getting that clarification of what the distinction would be and really if there's, how those factors fit, because if the factors are in there, they seem to be the guiding force.
Okay. So I think if we can get some clarification and then we can make a determination on, you know, if this can, if it needs to be back on the agenda next month, we can decide that or how we proceed, for sure. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bunger, for that very on-the-fly help. And this, look, this is, this is very on-the-fly. And I do think that this board has not always been accustomed to handling matters like this in the moment, at the table, in front of the public, right? And so there may be moments where we fumble through it or sort of fudge our way through it because we're trying to figure it out. But I also think that it's really important for us to have these kinds of conversations and discussions. In public, people are constantly calling for transparency, and this is transparency. It's about as transparent as it gets because none of us really knows what's happening. So there we go. But I think, I just want to say that obviously, you know, as we close out this conversation, nobody ever wants to be in a position like this, right? No school district, no administration, no board, anywhere wants to be in the kind of position that we're in at this moment, right? And so I just, I would ask, as we, as a district, move through this moment, that we try to remember that we are all in this, these roles and in these seats to the very best thing that we can for the children in our district and for the employees who are under our sort of care and supervision. And I know that that is true for this administrative team. It's true for this board. And I know it's true also for MCEA and for ASME. So I think we all are working towards a similar goal, and I just want us to stay sort of aligned in that, in that line of sight, right? That we're all here to sort of accomplish the best for this district. And so, thank you all for all of your work, and we will now move on.
President Hennessy?
Yes?
Just as a point of clarification in terms of the assignment that I believe the board is asking me to follow up on. It's my understanding that the board would like for me to follow up and answer the question, what issue or issues cannot be handled through our current discussion policy as it relates to changes in staffing?
Yes. That would require an additional policy.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We will now move on to district updates, and we have tonight's presentation on professional learning. Dr. Winston?
I'm just writing that down. Give me a second. So yes, thank you very much, President Hennessy. This evening, we're going to bring you our final presentation related to our 2021-2025 strategic plan. And Dr. Henderson is going to provide an update for you on where we stand with our teacher evaluation system that was recently adopted by the school corporation. There are a lot of exciting activities that are underway, and we're very thrilled to be able to share with you a status on that work. Dr. Henderson?
Thank you, Dr. Winston. As Dr. Winston mentioned, this is the final presentation with regard to the strategic plan. So I want to thank President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the Board of School Trustees for the opportunity to present an update this evening. Last year, the focus of the presentation was really on our staff makeup. This year, we're focusing on how the rollout of the Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Effectiveness Framework is going, and we'll highlight the decision around thoughtful classroom, how our pilot has progressed, and spend a little bit of time describing the research-based professional growth resources as well as a suite of online tools that are available to our administrators, our teachers, and our instructional coaches to support and help retain highly qualified staff in our classrooms. So there are three key components that were looked at when making the selection of what type of a teacher effectiveness model we would want to employ as part of our school corporation's evaluation plan. First and foremost, keeping the focus on professional learning and growth was at the forefront of the considerations when selecting a plan, as well as a means by which we could provide timely and actionable feedback to our teachers through observations and coaching support by our instructional coaches, as well as a system that provided high-quality, research-based instructional tools and support resources for our teachers to help them grow in their professional practice. Research clearly proves that the greatest impact on student learning comes from the quality of classroom instruction. And the only way to improve outcomes is to improve instruction. As we saw a replacement for the Marzano Evaluation Model, we were focused on selecting a new model that would increase access to high-quality, research-based tools to help teachers grow in their professional practice. The Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Effectiveness Framework, as you can see displayed in the graphic to the right on the screen there, consists of 10 different dimensions, and they're broken down into three major components of the Teacher Effectiveness Framework. The first of the three components is identified on the graphic in the four corners, and they're called aptly the four cornerstones. We'll talk a little bit more about the dimensions that fall within these three components momentarily. The second component of the model is located in the cross in the center of the graphic to the right, and those are referred to as the five episodes of effective instruction. And those are dimensions five through nine. And finally, professional practice is the third component, and that is made up in dimension 10. So we're going to speak just briefly about each of those three components and the dimensions that fall within each of those. So as we mentioned, component one is, consists of the four cornerstones of effective teaching. Those include routine processes of organization, rules, and procedures that teachers have in their classrooms and that students become accustomed to. Positive relationships, and those extend not only between teacher and student, but also colleague to colleague and teacher to administrator. Dimension three measures the enjoyment and the engagement of students in the learning process within the classroom. And dimension four really focuses in on ensuring that we have a culture of thinking and learning existing in our classrooms. If you move to component two in the five episodes of effective instruction, they involve dimensions five through- dimensions five through nine: preparing students for new learning, presenting that new learning, deepening and reinforcing that learning, then applying that learning, and finally reflecting on and celebrating that new learning. Last but certainly not least is component three, and that consists of professional practice or dimension ten. It is made up of three subcategories: professional growth and continuous learning, contributions to the larger school community, and professionalism. I want to spend a little bit of time talking about our timeline for implementation. During the 24-25 school year, we have piloted component one and component three with our teaching staff, so those are dimensions one through four and ten. In 25-26, we'll talk a little bit more about the pilot momentarily. In 25-26, we will be actually implementing and scoring component one and component three while simultaneously piloting component two. In our work with Thoughtful Classroom, we were advised, don't bite off more than you can chew when you're putting a new evaluation model in place, and to take this in phases is a really wise way to go about that. So we elected to implement component one and component three next year that will actually be scored and will result in the Teacher Effectiveness rating at the end of the school year while simultaneously piloting component two. In 26-27, we'll have full implementation and rating of all ten dimensions or all three components. So that's the rollout plan. We've conducted some initial training through Thoughtful Classroom and Education Advanced. So the model, and the rubric and the framework, is Thoughtful Classroom. The software, Education Advanced, houses the model and creates and stores the electronic records and allows for us to generate reports out of that system. So it's not a paper-based system, it's an electronic computer-based system. Education Advanced is the software that houses Thoughtful Classroom, and it's the software that both evaluators and classroom teachers will be able to access to get feedback on professional practice. So I said we'd spend a little bit of time talking about the pilot this year. We've had an extensive pilot involving over 150 people. All administrators plus 95 educators have been involved in the pilot of this program between March and May. All buildings were represented in the pilot, as well as multiple grade levels and content areas, with buildings having multiple, with many buildings having multiple educators involved in the pilot itself. We've also offered virtual office hours with classroom, Thoughtful Classroom consultants for evaluators, teachers, and our instructional coaches. There have been open office hours that have been staffed by folks from Thoughtful Classroom, our consultants or coaches, and they've provided direct support to individuals as we've worked through this process. We also conducted learning walks this year, which I'll detail on the following slide. So we hosted learning walks, and as you can see on the left side of the slide here, you can see some details about the structure, but briefly, there were 60 evaluators involved in the learning walks. They were conducted over two days with over 60 classroom visits, and then there were 44 opportunities to discuss the model and to discuss what they saw in their classroom visits and how that applies to the way in which you would use this system to evaluate classroom instruction. So in summary, our pilots provided a great start to our implementation of our new evaluation model, with the opportunity specifically during the learning walks to focus on dimensions one through four. We will have additional learning walks next year as we pilot dimensions five through nine to provide additional opportunities for professional learning and growth. Finally, I want to highlight a little bit about our instructional coaching series and the work that's been done to ensure that our instructional coaches are well-versed in the model, and that they understand the tools and resources that are available to support our classroom teachers in their professional growth. As you know, our instructional coaches do not evaluate teachers, but work alongside them to improve their professional practice, and ensuring that our instructional coaches understand and comprehend not only the evaluation tool, but all of the support mechanisms that are available through print materials, as well as some online suites and resources, so that they can walk alongside our classroom teachers as they work to improve their instruction and apply the feedback that's been provided to them by our evaluators. Our coaches have been working collaboratively to both study and present to their peers the research-based tools that improve instruction for our students. So again, I want to take the opportunity to thank you for having a chance to share our work and support our classroom teachers through the implementation of the Thoughtful Classroom Teacher Effectiveness Framework. We're excited by the progress that we've made so far and are looking forward to implementing dimensions one through four and ten this fall, while also simultaneously piloting dimensions five through nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Are there any comments or questions from the board around the new evaluation?
I just want to commend Dr. Henderson and Mr. Paul Farmer for the work that they've done. It's been a tireless body of work to get us to this point, and so I just want to make sure that they both know how deeply I am appreciative of the endless hours that they've put in to coordinate and organize such a successful pilot effort, and ultimately providing additional support for our teachers and the support system that will be in place in a much stronger manner. So thank you to both of you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Then we will now move on to our redistricting study. Dr. Winston?
Yes, as a follow-up to our December 2024 board meeting, you directed me and my team to do further study and examination of redistricting. So we formed a district, a redistricting study commission, and that work is being led by Dr. Dowling, and we've had our first meeting with an amazing group of individuals who have stepped up to the plate to provide their guidance, their input, and their perspectives. And so I appreciate Dr. Dowling's leadership, and I'd like Dr. Dowling to provide you with a brief overview of our work to date.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on the Redistricting Study Commission. Tonight, we'll talk a lot about our community engagement piece of it. This is our April update. First, I'd like to talk about the composition of the commission. We have 92 community members. We have students, parents, former parents, community members, teachers, former teachers, board staff members, and building administrators. We were pleased that we were able to invite everybody who asked to be on, to be part of the commission, to be part of the commission. We're also pleased that we have representation from all our school buildings. We had our first meeting last week, like Dr. Winston mentioned. We started the meeting by going over our group norms to establish those. We reviewed our project charter, which I'll talk about, a little bit about in a minute, and Dr. Finley, who's a big part of the Redistricting Study Commission, shared a history of redistricting in MCCSC. And then the heart of the meeting was to get input from the commission members. We did a World Cafe model focused on getting input from our commission members on the two board priorities for the commission, which is balancing socioeconomic status and evaluating cost-effectiveness. And our second question for the commission was to get, to ask them what topics do they need to know more about, whether it's transfer policies, maintenance costs, or other topics, transportation information, and we gathered that input at the meeting. This is a screenshot of our project charter, which really helps guide our work. This is available on our website, on our webpage, mccsc.edu/redistricting. I will highlight a few components of our project charter, which again really kind of defines the scope of our work. Just a few goals and metrics that I'll highlight is that the study is looking to gain an understanding of considerations to achieve improved socioeconomic status across our schools. We're looking to study factors that inform cost-effectiveness of MCCSC buildings. We're looking at the potential impacts of redistricting on students and families. We're also looking at the potential impacts of inter-district and intra-district transfer policies on school populations and demographics. In terms of deliverables, our study, created with input from our commission members, will include an analysis of the district-wide models presented by Preston Smith from Business Information Services, and a review of factors that impact the cost-effectiveness of redistricting efforts. Is that going to get that one out there? Okay. One thing that's come up frequently that I did want to highlight, this has come up in a lot of conversations during the commission meeting, as well as a feedback form that I'll talk about in a few more slides, is we've been asked frequently, in what way do recent actions by the Indiana Legislature related to school financing impact the work of the commission? It's come up so frequently, I thought it was worth mentioning, so that's why I've included this slide. In terms of our community engagement plan, as I mentioned, we have a webpage on our website, mccsc.edu/redistricting. It contains information about the commission, it contains a timeline of the commission's work so far, as well as a timeline of the history of redistricting in MCCSC. It will also contain a slide deck of commission meetings. We want that to be available to, for everybody in our community. It will also contain an extensive question-and-answer section, which we are actively working on. It also provides community members an opportunity to sign up to get email updates after each meeting. Other opportunities for community engagement and feedback include, we sent out, on Monday, yesterday, we sent out similar questions that we asked our commission members. We sent out to our community yesterday. As of 4:30 this afternoon, we already had 128 responses for our community on these questions, and we're eager to get more. We will make sure that that feedback form is widely distributed.
How many did you say?
128 so far. Yeah, yeah. And the more we get, the more information we have, the better we can guide the work of our commission, so we really appreciate those feedbacks. We're going to make sure that we get more than 128 of those, so we're going to make sure it's distributed widely. It'll be open until Monday, the 28th. Finally, I want to just update that our next commission meeting will be tomorrow. We will have a presentation from Preston Smith from Business Information Services on the 14 scenarios that he previously presented in November of 2024. We will also present information on the topics that the commission asked us to study and provide more information about, including transportation, transfers, and other related topics. And that concludes my presentation. That's a QR code for anybody who's interested in adding their feedback about the Redistricting Study Commission's work so far. There's a QR code, but like I said, we'll also make sure it's distributed widely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? I have one question. How many, how many of these meetings do we have planned?
So far, we have four planned, but our commitment is if we need more meetings, we'll add more meetings. We're not going to rush the work. We're going to make sure that we take the time and do it right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowling. This looks like a big project, and I appreciate the way that you're approaching it. This probably isn't a fair question, but did you, do you have an answer to that question about how will recent legislation impact the work of the commission?
Yeah. Well, it feels relevant to everything we're doing right now, but I brought it up just because it felt like it's something that we need to be thinking about and considering.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Dowling, for that presentation and for the work you and your team are doing. We will now receive this month's legislative update from Board Member Pirani.
Last one, I think. I don't know whether to be excited or sad. So this is week 15 of the session, and last week SB 1 was signed by the governor, and this is what we commonly refer to as the Property Tax Relief Bill for homeowners. I'll reserve my comment on that. The significance of this piece of legislation is that it's going to really reduce our funding in MCCSC. We are going to now have to share referendum dollars with charter schools starting in 2028, and our referendum questions can only be in general elections now. So what this means is that we are projected to lose around 17 million over the next three school years. On April 17th, the state revenue forecast, I'm sorry, I'm just the bearer of bad news when it comes to this stuff, so sorry, was released, and it's estimated that Indiana is going to experience a loss of 2.3 billion over the next two years, not particularly encouraging for the work currently underway with the state budget, which is 1001. It's expected that this will adversely impact our state tuition dollars that are allocated to schools. There are still a few bills in conference committee this week, which I just mentioned. One was 1001, Senate Bill 287, which has to do with partisan school board elections. Keep calling on this one. I've been following it closely today because it's been in committee, and their staffers are reporting lots and lots and lots of calls on this one, so keep calling, and Senate Bill 2, or excuse me, 482 on absenteeism. As this year's legislative session winds down over the next week or so, please continue to make your voices heard by calling, texting, or emailing your legislators or anyone that's on these committees. It doesn't take very much time at all, because your efforts do make a difference. If you want any more information from our updates, you can go to our website under the School Board of Trustees tab, and there's a link for our legislators in the area, as well as the monthly updates. And once again, thank you for sitting through these fun reports and continue to speak up for public education in Indiana.
Thank you, Board Member Pirani. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the legislative update?
Just one point of clarification, Ashley. You said that this is projected to reduce the MCCSC budget by 17 million between now and 2028.
Property tax, sorry.
That's just the property tax.
Property tax, yeah.
That's, to be clear, that's before the referendum sharing.
That is correct. Thank you for pointing out. I missed some key pieces.
I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page about how much we stand to lose.
I don't know. I just feel like we're losing everywhere, so.
And on a positive note, I'd just like to, I know that a lot of parents and teachers and community members did reach out to the legislature to try to prevent SB 1 from passing or to minimize the impact that it might have, and I'm grateful for that. I know that it was hard for parents to adjust when we closed school to allow teachers to make their voices heard, and I just appreciate everyone giving us the flexibility to let teachers participate, because it's, obviously, it's important, it's going to impact us significantly.
Yes, absolutely. And I think, ISTA, you ended up having like 400 or something teachers up there?
ISTA total?
Yeah. Wow, 700. That is an amazing showing. And I think it so demonstrates this current moment and how important it is, and so if there are still things that you can continue to call about, please do. The legislative session has maybe two days left, so we will do what we can, and I just appreciate all of the community support that we've seen for our teachers in our district and across the state. Okay, does the board have any comments or reports you'd like to share in general? Nothing, then. Finally, Dr. Winston, do you have any additional information to share with us tonight?
I do have a few. Our summer learning programs, registration for our many summer learning opportunities is currently underway. We have opportunities for pre-K through high school students, including the Little Explorers Adventure Camp for pre-K and K. Many families of four-year-old pre-K students will qualify for free or very low tuition costs to attend, thanks to the public support for MCCSC's 2023 Family Friendly Referendum. For more information, please check the MCCSC website. Sustaining excellence news. Students from Bloomington High School South have been named one of the 10 national finalist teams in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow STEM competition, which will take place in Washington DC, one of 10 across the entire country, in case you didn't catch that. This competition encourages students to develop innovative solutions using STEM principles to tackle pressing issues within their communities. This team has designed a prototype called the Storm Shield, an eco-friendly headband specifically designed to protect hearing aids from damage during physical activities while also sensing potential dangers, thereby improving accessibility in sports for students who use hearing aids. The competition will occur on April 28th in Washington DC. The competition will occur on April twenty-eighth in Washington, DC, where the team will vie for the opportunity to become one of three national winners. Each national winner will receive a prize package worth one hundred thousand dollars in Samsung technology and classroom supplies. This talented team is guided by Bloomington South teachers, Dr. Kirsten Mills and Cara Parker. Their achievements thus far are commendable, and they are wished the best of luck in the competition. I'd also like to take a moment to extend my congratulations to Yena, Yena Park, a remarkable student from Bloomington High School North, for achieving an outstanding perfect score on the American College Testing ACT. This incredible accomplishment places her in an elite category as only one percent of all students who take the ACT earn such a distinguished score. Yena's hard work, and I apologize if I'm butchering your name, dear, dedication and commitment to her education have clearly paid off, and we are immensely proud of her achievement. We wish her all the best in her future endeavors, confident that she will continue to excel in whatever path she chooses. This is what sustaining excellence looks like in MCCSC. A few additional upcoming events. Healthapalooza. This Thursday, April twenty-fourth, MCCSC will host Healthapalooza at Bloomington South. This event is open to all families and focuses on health and literacy. It will include hands-on activities, educational sessions, community resources, and much more. Dinner will be provided from six to seven PM, and we extend our gratitude to Novo Nordisk for sponsoring this meal. Our Family Fun Run will convene on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, and Grandview Elementary will be the host. It will be a one-mile or five-k run event for students and their families and friends. The race serves as a culminating event for our elementary running clubs, allowing for an opportunity for families to participate together. While there is no registration fee, we kindly ask families to consider donating. All profits will be put towards the mental health support endowment through the Monroe County Community Schools Foundation. Evening of Stars. On May first, literally next week, May first, we will host the annual Evening of Stars. This event will honor employees nominated for the Star of Excellence Award and recognize our twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five retirees for their service and dedication to MCCSC. I want to thank Dr. Henderson, Mrs. Judy Rush, and the entire Human Resources staff for their work on this annual celebration honoring our employees. I also want to thank all of our many sponsors for their generous contributions, which have made this event possible. Duck Race. The Foundation of Monroe County Community Schools and the Kiwanis Club of South Central Indiana are teaming up to race ducks for a great cause, our students, and that would be plastic ducks.
Yes, I know. I knew it was coming.
The Duck Race Festival will be held on Saturday, May third, at Woolery Mill from eleven AM to five PM. This free, family-friendly event will feature fun activities for all ages, live music from student groups, Audrey Clampett, Colonel Angus, and Hank Ruff, five-hundred-minute reading challenge. Need to mention on April fifteenth, you helped students reach their, oh, yeah, I did do that. Yeah, I helped students reach their five-hundred-minute reading challenge along with Vili Albright and with Alexis Harmon when we read at Morgan Stern Books and Cafe.
Next time, you have to write note to self at the top.
Clearly. An exciting Jeep show and thrilling duck heats and final race. The grand prize-winning duck receives two thousand five hundred dollars, and every duck has a chance to win fifty thousand dollars. Adopt your ducks today. Visit the Foundation's website for adoption locations and the mail-in form. Don't miss out on a fun day while supporting local students. Our two-year strategy. In February, I shared information on our two-year strategy for sustaining excellence. At that time, I announced that we would be working to reduce expenditures through our first strategy, natural attrition, and we continue to do so, and we are beginning to see incremental progress, and we are encouraged. Next month, as promised, I will provide my quarterly update on all of our efforts so far. As you have heard from Board Member Pirani this evening, the recent passage last week of Senate Act one, SEA one, presents additional challenges for our corporation, and it complicates our two-year strategy. This new law is projected to reduce revenue to our corporation in the operations fund by approximately seventeen million dollars over the next three years. Board Member Pirani clearly highlighted a few of the financial impacts that we can expect. Our budget office is currently in the process of fully analyzing what these impacts will be in an effort to position our organization for the future. I want to also state that I am grateful for the solidarity with our teachers, our parents, and others in letting their voices be heard last week at the State House. The projected reduction in state funding over the next three years will impact our ability to to maintain current support services and staffing levels throughout the organization at central office, in our departments, and yes, in our school buildings. Because payroll accounts for approximately eighty-five percent of all of our operational expenses, these changes from the state will require us to make staffing reductions to maintain long-term financial stability. In spite of these financial challenges, we remain steadfast in our commitment to provide quality instruction. Different staffing models will be needed to ensure that we continue to deliver on our promise for every student in every classroom. Different staffing models across all categories. How we deliver services may look different, but we will continue to serve all of our students. Two, we will continue our efforts to pause new hires, with the exception of some specialty positions, summer school, adventure camp, and ECA positions for next year, as an example. All positions will be examined on a case-by-case basis. Third, it will require us to seek operational efficiencies across the entire organization, including centralized offices and other non-school buildings. My team will continue to assess and identify potential reductions through centralized services, programs, and staffing in the coming weeks and months in an effort to realize savings outside of the classroom as our first priority. We remain committed to protecting classroom instruction and student services as much as we possibly can, given our financial realities. Every effort will be made to minimize drastic impacts on our children. I cannot eliminate the impact, but we will make our best effort to minimize the impact. To be sure, the loss of this amount of revenue will require us to rethink how we do school. Any and all changes affecting our staff will be handled with care. My team is actively engaged in ongoing discussions with MCEA, ASME, and our building administrators and department leaders about how we will go about doing this hard work. I am encouraged by the honest dialogue, and I appreciate the opportunity that our formal, monthly discussion affords us as we navigate these uncertainties. We will continue to be thoughtful. We will be measured in our decision-making in the choices that we make today, so we can achieve long-term financial stability to protect the heart of what we do, serve all of the children within our care, not just today, but for years to come. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. Any questions or comments from board? Okay. And that concludes our meeting then. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, and with that, we are adjourned.